Jeremy.
There we go.
Thank you.
Let's call to order the combined November, December meeting of the Lower Southford Towne's Planning Commission. First order on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the. Bring that in. I think there was point clarification regarding Dave's appearance at the meeting. And we get a motion to approve and look back for a. Sign it. Who's in favor? Close. And we. Can you hear us? No, you're muted. We have, we have one of our members joining us by zooming in.
He might have stepped away.
Okay.
You can't hear Stephanie either. She's trying to talk. No, she's muted and she's muted herself.
Okay.
There he is.
We can hear you and I think Mike, you just need to unmute us. We can't do it ourselves. So.
Yeah, he has unmuted them. I'm asking, man, it's a pop up.
There you go.
Yeah, it, it, I tried. It said the host had muted us, just like Stephanie said. I don't dispute isn't a good idea, Mike, so.
And it just for clarification, man, it's your, your vote on the minutes?
Uh, in favor. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Tom, first order on the agenda on your plan reviews is the L S T A. Five thirty seven special study. We have somebody from. Gilmore. Come on up and give us the outline.
Um, my name's Tom Duffy from Gilmore Associates. I'm the consultant for Lower South, Lower South. Lower Southford Township Authority. Um, what you have in front of you is a five thirty seven special study. It's a planning document with a couple of different bullet items that we're, we're targeting. So that's why it's a special study because we. Pulled together a couple of different things we're looking at. Um, one of the things we're looking at is pump stations. Remember back around twenty eighteen, yeah, the, uh, near Township Park is a Cheswick pump station. We were able to eliminate that. And when we eliminate a pump station, it can flow by gravity. It's more reliable. We could save on the pumps in operation, maybe it's electric or that stuff. So since then, we looked at all their other pump stations, were able to identify. The Main Ridge Pump Station on Quarry Road. The Oak Ridge Pump Station near the elementary school. And the Letter Rock Pump Station is pump stations that we could possibly eliminate. Um, when we actually look at closer, the Letter Rock is going to be too costly. So the plan document that we have, we did a cost analysis in there and then ultimately the authorities not did not want to move forward with eliminating that pump station. But they do want to move forward with eliminating the other two pump stations.
Okay.
Um, and then in addition, by eliminating those pump stations, it will get additional flow to the Quarry Road Pump Station that's already near capacity. And then with all the other development coming in, that pump station, um. Since the two thousand thirteen, it was, uh, in the planning documents that it would need to be upgraded at some time. So, um, we're also looking to upgrade that pump station. So that pump station be upgraded, the other two be eliminated. And then on top of that. A completely separate thing is we had a resident come to the authority and ask if they could connect to public sewer. They had a failed unlock system. At that time, we were working on these documents. We met with D P and they said, you know, let's put it together in the same special study. And then they had a couple of the properties around us. They wanted us to look at. That's, um, seven fifty two Harley'sville Pike and ones around there. On their post office and they finally get that highway intersection there. So we looked at those seven lots of how those could be connected to public sewer and whether they need to be connected to a public sewer.
Okay.
That must have something with.
Is there something? Do you need a vote?
See, this is just. To the planning commission for a comment. So you, you don't actually. You're not looked at to approve or deny it. It's sent to the health department. It's sent to public thirty day public comment period. It's just collection of comments that then D P, when they review it, can, can weigh in.
Okay. We'll see. Started here. Scott, do you have any comments? Dave? I don't, it sounds like a good idea to make things more efficient.
I would like to. So if you're going to eliminate the two pumping stations and you're going to rebuild the other one?
Yes.
So is that going to be enough? That's going to last twenty years, let's say?
Yes. So our, our projection is actually the ultimate buildup of the township based on the zoning. So that's where we looked at to, okay, if you're going to go through the effort of upgrading the pump station, how many years is that going to be good for? So, um, the typical scenario. Uh, for planning documents is twenty years, but we looked at, as sure you guys know with development, you never quite know when they're going to build it. You know it's zoned. You know, for commercial use, it's been agriculture, it's been woods, but you know, it's going to be commercial one there or other. So it's full build out as well.
Uh, Manus, do you have any comments? Manus?
Um, just, just along the same question that Dave had. So I'd certainly understand the Quarry Road decommissioning, but the, uh, mainland ridge one, I, I, I had the same question Dave did. You have sufficient capacity within that area if we get any additional development along there?
So the mainland ridge pump station, that's the one we decommissioned. The Quarry Road pump station is the one we would increase the capacity.
All right. Uh, that's, as I'm reading the document, I look like I read the other way. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're, you're right. So decommissioning the mainland ridge pub station. So. As long, as long as you think you have enough capacity, I mean, I, I worry about. Store Road and a couple of the areas that we obviously are looking at, um, for future development, just to make sure you've got capacity.
All right, we would be downlying the average rating of, of the pump station.
Okay. No other comments, John?
Okay. Um. So is, is that sufficient for?
Yeah, we would just be looking for a letter that you have no comments or support project or something that, that, that we can forward to you. Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Uh, let me see, next item, four eighty eight Harley'sville Pike sketch. Somebody representing.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sean Cullen. Here on behalf of my partner, Kristen Poncio, Hamburg, Ruben, Maxwell, Malin and Lupin. We're here today only as an initial sketch plan review of fifty thousand foot view on the four eighty eight Harley'sville Pike. Uh, property. As you know, that's a little bit over nine acres. Uh, it's already zoned R four medium density, mixed dwelling use. So as a matter of legal rights. Uh, when your initial zoning maps were laid out, we was anticipated that something equivalent to what we asked to build here, uh, would exist. Uh, I've heard this property, uh, virtual multiple cases, the Horton property. They were the developers that came in ahead of us with a plan. And as I, as you will see, uh, this evening throughout the course of this development, what we are proposing is a far better plan. For a better use for that property and which one which I think will fit much better within the neighborhood and community. Um, if I may, Paul, Sean, Moons are engineer to begin the process, civil engineer to start explaining at least the plans you get, that generally will be under your permission.
Sure.
Hey guys, Don.
This is.
Sean Monstiff Bowler, um, as Sean introduced. So yes, uh, this plan was previously before you under a different applicant, um. The layout is the last one that you saw from that previous applicant is by and large the same, but there are some. Rather significant improvements that we are proposing with this application. Uh, for starters, homes themselves of the size, uh, similar in size, yes. However, uh, we are. Only proposing thirty six units instead of the thirty eight that they previously proposed. Um, and more importantly, they are going to be two story instead of three story. Uh, as well as. A actually larger width. Uh, they're more of a, uh, carriage style townhome, um, which has, in our opinion. Much greater curb appeal than the previously proposed applications since they were like twenty foot wide. And again, three stories, very, um. Very up and down structural, you know. Um, not very. Uh. Appealing kind of design. Uh, we also have two, two car garages proposed, uh, for each unit, uh, along with a two car driveway to support. Um. The, the layout in itself is primarily driven from Penn dot actually. Uh, in that we, Penn dot requested that we line up with, uh, meeting house. Um, perpendicular to that inters, that current freeway intersection. Uh, so we're going to be adding a fourth leg to that existing intersection. Um. We also are compliant with the, uh, setbacks. Uh, which is a forty foot building setback. Uh, you can kind of see by this line here, you know, the homes. Uh, in fact, we have a little bit larger of a setback on the Windsor Drive, uh, area. I believe the previous plan was exactly forty or right about. Uh, we are closer to forty eight along the back there. Um, more importantly, we, there's a fifteen foot landscape buffer requirement which we are abiding by. Uh, we plan to heavily plant that area to provide some buffer and some shielding to the adjacent property owners. Um. We are also proposing a, um. Emergency access. Uh, which I believe there was a comment in, in the township engineers letter to potentially widen that a little bit, which we, of course, uh. But will comply with. Um. Not only do we have that secondary access in case of emergency, but we did run fire trucks through the entire development, blew it through the cul-de-sac. And they, they go through there without issue. Uh, in current configuration. Um. We also are proposing a trail, uh, that will connect to the showstop screen there. There's a, a previously, uh, recently. Uh, constructed trail, uh, that township has, uh, that's all township property on that side of the plan. Yep, you can see it right here. Um, now how we tie into that, that's, we may end up revising that to, uh, potentially avoid some drainage features. Uh, but our intent is to tie into that, just. Excuse me, existing trail. Um. Property has some constraints where there's actually a hundred foot P P L right away on the property. Uh, and working with the township engineer, we've since removed that from our density calculations, uh, being that that's an easement across our property. Um. We have stormwater basin proposed, uh, the plan view upper left corner, as you can see up here. Um. And we also are proposing a recreational area to be used by the development. Um, which I think there were some comments to add some sidewalk activities to that, which of course we will apply with once we, we kind of finalize the design. Um. That's primarily the, you know, design changes, I would say, from the, from the previous application. Um, I will say that, you know. This property is the, in the R four medium height density. Uh. Mixed dwelling units zoning, um, and the. Triplex, quadruplex and townhouses, uh, are by right within that district. Um, so. The plan that we currently present today, uh, in our opinion is, is by right. Um, so it applies by your zoning code. We would continue that, uh, through the land development process. Um. If any additional waivers through design, you know, stormwater design, we haven't gotten into that quite yet. Uh, of course, we would apply for that when we go for, um, hopefully preliminary final land development. Yeah, that's, that's the plan, you know, by and large, um. Here to entertain any questions you guys may have?
Sean, if I may, um, ladies and gentlemen, we are in receipt of the three review letters. Trying to view an opportunity to review those? Yes, I'd like to go over them if I may. It's the, uh. First is the C K S engineer report. You've got an opportunity to review that. Absolutely. And the McMahon slash Bowman company review letter, you've seen that also. Yes. And finally, the planning commission, you've seen that? Yep. And the majority of the comments, uh, that are made of our property, our proposal. Would fulfill most of those requirements, correct? Yes. Now, there will be times in which we will be asking for waivers and those waivers, uh, if I may, do you believe that they are necessary within? Either the topography that is we are laying out for us, correct? Yep. Or in order to enhance, to make the property better. Of course, so things like, um, sightlines. And the length of the driveway as long of the roadway, as long as we've got that emergency access, those waivers will be requesting in the future. Yes. Correct. My guests, ladies and gentlemen, we're here, uh, certainly entertain any questions. We have our traffic engineers. Should you have any traffic questions? Sean's done an excellent job introducing the initial project. So we're here at your pleasure to answer your questions.
Michelle, you want to give any comments? You want to kind of run through your letter a little bit?
I, I certainly can. Is there, is there anything, um, in my letter, let's talk about zone first, that, um. Would require you to get a variance or do you? A feel that your preliminary plant submission will address those comments?
Uh, we believe at this point that we will not need zoning related. Uh, we're designing it specifically within the code. That we don't have to, uh, entertain additional issues such as zoning. And issues like that.
All right. So you don't disagree with any of the comments I have in my letter?
No, the, the one that, that this plan that we see doesn't quite reflect that we intend to reflect on the, um. Land development application is the four foot also.
Yes, I thought that you might bring that up.
So, yes, so we've, we've worked with, uh, J P O Lanes and their, their internal architect. Uh, to stagger the homes a little bit more, um, to adhere to your ordinance there.
Okay.
And actually, what he appears in overall, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And we will have to demonstrate compliance with the. Section one sixty four, there's twenty two for the open space. That's.
Right. So they just showed the, uh, open space area and we want to make sure that it adheres to the ordinance by not having, um. Too many natural research disturbance of natural resources and things of that nature.
Right.
And you feel that you could do that in your preliminary plant submission?
Yes.
Okay, uh, you also show an active recreational area. I, I know it's only a sketch plan, but do you have any ideas of what it could be? And maybe the planning commission wants to talk about what they might like to see in that area?
Sure. I mean, we're, we're still kind of kicking around some ideas internally with the team, um. You know, we, we intend for it to be an open space, uh, you know, graded off at a, a shallow slope. That way, you know. Kids can kind of use it for, for, you know, play area, kick around a ball, um, that kind of thing. Um, the exact details of it, not, not quite yet, open to maybe hearing some opinions, um, but those haven't been ironed out quite yet. Other than providing sidewalks to it. Probably.
Or a trail. Or a trail.
Correct, yeah. So definitely probably five to both sides on. So you probably want from the, um. Uh, fire access on, on, uh, plan to your northern side and then also, uh, potentially down to the parking area. Right aside there.
Can we account the, um, the modesty access as part of anything?
Can you count that?
When I, when I read the definition. Cause I wasn't sure that that.
I don't believe it can be as part of the open space, but their active open space area is that different hatch pack.
Right, it's the hatch.
Right. So it's not included in there? What, before you submit preliminary plans, check that definition.
Yep.
And you could run that by me or Mike, the zoning officer to see if that can be included, if you are indeed including it in your space.
Okay, certainly.
Does the planning commission have any other ideas of what they'd like to see in the active open space?
I, I don't, um, but about that open space, cause I think it was a weird letter, Michelle. I'm not quite sure where I think I read it. About. Ownership and maintenance of at least the trail, if not the open space. Did he, wasn't he, did you have a question you knew about that?
I probably said that they have to, uh, state who's going to maintain it. Yes.
I think the question was if we're going to dedicate it.
Yeah.
I, I think my client would not be opposed. The applicant would not be opposed to dedicating it. Um, obviously that's something that we have to work out throughout the land development process, but.
Okay. Most of the trail system, isn't most of it dedicated? Throughout the township.
Previously, if that was the case, but lately that is not the case.
And the, the only reason I, but I asked this still, because we were saying the trail connects up to the other new trail that, that's into the park.
Our cross.
Which has a lot of facilities in there. So I'm not necessarily prone to say, oh, let's over. Overbuild when you have a walking trail to. A quite large park with a lot of facilities. And already existing.
Yes, and I believe you would want connectivity.
Right, you want connectivity and sometimes just an open field. Where you're in a neighborhood with that much front yard or backyard. If you want to play kickball as a ten year old, it's where you go to that field, play kickball. So, I, I, I'm, I'm actually okay with just being in space. With plantings around the perimeter or something like that. And maintain it, yes.
But more of a flat slope as.
Right, so you can play soccer, kick a ball around.
Your ordinance says five percent, maybe, if I recall.
Yeah, yeah.
Remember when this came through previously, we had some, a lot of questions about floodplain? And, um. Uh. So I'm just wondering what. You know, what you found with that so far? Or you not completely know into that yet?
They, they have a little bit. Why don't you discuss what you're doing with that?
Certainly, um, so there, there is a, uh, the lineated stream. That runs through the property, um. I said, there is a delineated stream?
Yeah. More. Yeah.
It is a.
I'm sorry, but just anybody if you have an opportunity to speak, if you just let Sean present.
Please just let them continue with their presentation. Yeah, keep up this one and keep your voice up.
Sure. So we have hired a, a wetland scientist. To go out there performing wetland and stream delineation of the property. Uh, they have identified sections of streams and a small wetland. As well, it runs down, sort of down the center of the property as exists today. Um. However, that stream is not delineated by FEMA. Or is now nowhere on a firm map. FEMA. Therefore, they would not take jurisdiction over said stream. Um. Any permitting associated with that stream would then be go through designated E P. Uh, which we are certainly prepared to do. Um, we are proposing to relocate it, uh, Plan View South, which we've accepted, but, uh, for all intents and purposes here, Plan View South. Uh, around this portion of the property. Um, that location has been discussed with D P and that's actually their preferred location of that stream, uh, given our, our layout here. Um. They feel like it would. Provide for the best enhancement once, once everything is, uh, regrown in with, with the street.
Could you, could you say that again, please? And then just start up at the top left and show the residents where it begins. And how and where you are going to relocate it?
Sure. So it, it sort of starts actually down. Here, um, here being off of Harley'sville Pike. Um, there's an existing head wall that sort of opens up and dumps out. Um, and the existing location kind of runs Plan View North. And then Plan View West. Um. And over. Towards that existing trail, uh, across the P P L. Uh, power lines. So our plan is to, by picking up the same location, uh, we're going to pipe a portion of it, which really is just an extension of the existing pipes, uh, under Harley'sville Pike. Um, and then open channel flow. Through and around the recreational area. Um, we will then pipe it once again, which is, is not a totally uncommon practice, uh, with D P and their stream relocations. Um, they usually require that that pipe be buried, say a third of the way to, that way sediment can actually fill those pipes. Um, and our stormwater caps, you know, provide for that loss of capacity. Uh, but that's so that, um. Any organisms in the, in the stream, almost as if the pipes are not there. Uh, because we are going to then reopen up into open channel flow for the remainder, uh, of the portion on our pro. On our property and join back up with the existing stream just outside of the P P L right away. Uh, again, Plan View, uh, Northwest.
Thank you.
So the stream is going, you're going to pipe it under the trail?
It is going to, if you're talking about this walking trail. We're, we're probably actually going to relocate, and I think this is from previous discussions with the county, but relocate that trail. Um, to be on the northern, again, Plan View northern side of that stream. Um, but we will certainly, you know, we have to pipe it where that emergency access is for the fire exit.
Manus, do you have any, uh, comments?
Um, thanks, John. Um, first of all, can the applicant confirm? I think I heard you say that there are now two story instead of three story units. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great. I, I, I appreciate you taking that feedback. I, I also see that you've tried to introduce a, a healthy amount of buffering. Um, do you have the ability to do a berm, um, where that buffering is just to see if we can elevate that until that grows in?
Yeah, I think that's certainly on the table and something we can get into during the land development design.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be good. I'm, I'm disappointed that Penn dot pushed you to the meeting house point because I, I kind of wanted to see. Uh, that entry point be maybe a little bit further north. So we could have gotten some further separation, but I appreciate you taking the feedback that you did. I, I think joint land development, you know, any ways that we can look to mitigate impact on, on surrounding properties is something we're going to be looking to, uh. To understand a little better, but I, I think this is an improvement over what we saw last time. That's all I have, John.
Okay.
And just, just to add to that briefly, I would say that that's actually one of the waivers that we're going to need because of the separation between our proposed road and Cheswick. Um. And, and again, that's driven by Penn dot, their requirements to add a third leg to the meeting house intersection. That could push it.
So, and, and I would, I would add that I, I agree with Scott's comment. I think having that recreation area be usable as a flat surface is fine. I don't think we need to see, you know, any, um. You know, hardscape improvements, playground or anything like that. I think there's enough in the, the surrounding areas that we, you know, the, let's just leave it as, you know, something that the local kids can use, but let's, let's not develop it out would be my, my recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Could you next talk about stormwater management and what you're going to do? I think we're going to, I think we're going to take questions from the residents.
Just don't mind. Actually, the next person I want to get comments from is our traffic engineer. Who's also joining us. I think Stephanie first. Stephanie?
It's not.
Okay, we got it now. I needed Mike to unmute me.
If you could please let the consultants talk. Stephanie, can you go ahead and go through your letter, please?
Absolutely, um. So I think, uh, similarly, I think our comments were, were pretty similar from the previous, uh, version of the plan. I just wanted to highlight the fact that we are asking, uh, for the. Radii at the proposed intersection to be set back along with the sidewalk. Um, to accommodate what might be a future center left turn lane along one thirteen. Uh, at one thirteen is a principal arterial. Uh, we want to make sure with the left turn lane that is up at Maple and Paterno. And any potential improvements, uh, with the one thirteen alternate route. We want to make sure this area could be serviced by a center left turn lane if need be, as there are several residents along the stretch that would benefit from that. So in doing so, we would recommend that the radii for this access be set back. As well as the curb line and the sidewalk as far back to the ultimate, you know, within the ultimate right of way line as possible to allow for that center left turn lane. In the future, if it becomes part of, uh, um, a different project. I think. That is my primary. Um. Comment that I just wanted to point out with the layout, um, I. I agree with you Manus. I, I do disagree with the alignment at the intersection, but there really isn't anything we can do about that. I would have liked to have seen more separation between Cheswick. And the proposed access, uh, but there was coordination with Penn dot and the Penn, and, and Penn dot did, um, come back with a, a firm response as to the alignment of this intersection. Uh, so we do have that documented.
Stephanie, further clarify, there was a, a question about the distance between Cheswick and this proposed, uh, road. And I see I have it listed as two hundred and thirty eight point six feet, the distance between the two roads. So that might answer the question in the back. But could you talk a little bit more about what Penn dot is requiring specifically?
Sure, um, so Penn dot basically is looking at the fact that an aligned intersection. Is a better condition, a safer condition. It's more clear for vehicles on, on all of the approaches. Uh, to be aligned when making turning movements out onto the main road. Um, so they are, are really just include, um, requiring that. That that intersection be aligned with Meeting House. So there's abs, there's really no. Uh, flexibility to locate this proposed access in any other location. Um, they do have to make sure that their access is contained within their property frontage, because as, as it is shown here with the alignment, it's close to the property line. Um, or the, the southern property line, uh, but that radius is contained within the property frontage, and that's primarily what Penn Dot will look for. Uh, I will point out that we did ask for the turning movement, um, auxiliary lane movements to be evaluated as part of the traffic study, which is required. Uh, through the land development process. Um, we don't anticipate that a right turn lane would be warranted for this site. Uh, but they will have to demonstrate that with their analysis, uh, in the traffic study moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll defer to the hard traffic in here. If you guys want to hear more on that regarding some of those improvements, um, certainly they're gonna be. Uh, you know, Penn Dot's gonna take jurisdiction over that and what we can and cannot do. I believe Stephanie, you did have the comment in there about connectivity, uh, for a sidewalk over to Cheswick. Uh, which we did look at. I think we're, uh, we're willing to comply with, with that comment. So again.
We did have that comment, uh, because of the, the nature of the township's approach to trail and sidewalk connections. We are looking at that throughout the township. Uh, and we do think that would be a benefit to get them to Cheswick. Obviously Cheswick has. Um, sidewalks all throughout the development and, and having this little piece extended to Cheswick would. You know, would be a benefit in this area, so we appreciate that.
We have looked into that and there is the space availability to do that.
And so you will be doing it.
I also would note that, you know, as part of the existing condition right now, there's actually a lot of shoulder along our frontage. Um, it's about thirteen feet, I believe. Um, so that, you know, there may be some, some wiggle from there or maybe run some paint lines to lines and things. Um, something we'll, we'll get through, you know, during land development and the Penn Dot process, but.
Yes, I think my main point is that we don't want to be restricted by what happens at this location with your curb line offsets. Um, you know, for, or a potential improvement in the future along this section.
All right, any other comments from board members?
Nope, I agreed everything Steph said in her letter. I did.
Are, are there any things in the McMahon letter that you have a problem with? So pretty much a welcome.
Uh, I believe we are welcome by. Um, again, some of the nuances will have to sort through with, with, uh, your township engineer and Penn Dot, of course. Um.
And I'm just stipulated with the exception of the way it was, it's a little immature to talk about.
Yeah.
I guess my, my only comments, um. Were, I, I still need to have a little bit. Greater understanding of the density calculate, the bonuses, like to make sure your data is off the right. And then I. I also think that the, the, the open space might be a little bit off. And it's not, you're including a certain amount of basin in the open space, which you are allowed to do. It's a very, the way the ordinance reads. More than ten percent of the required common space needs to accommodate stormwater detention. It doesn't say that no more than ten percent of the open space. So it's of the required. So when I figured it out, I came up with, uh. Point one through seven acres in the open space. Basin area and you're, you're showing point three line, so it's. Just go ahead and double check all your calculations.
For sure. Yeah, as we refine the plan and, and actually engineer, you know, the plan scene for you. And we'll double check.
Before I open it up, I can go. Claire, is there any comments?
I'll try to think more about. So we reviewed the development, proposed townhouse development, and we provided some comments related to the design of that. However, we preface that with some concerns related to the natural features that are on the site. And, um, there would be a number of existing large trees that would be. And I know you just reviewed how. Uh, you've been in discussion with D P regarding the relocation of the stream channel. Um. Our concern is just that that's not always the most beneficial way to tackle. Um, wetland airways or. However, assuming that the plan goes forward as supposed, um, we did provide some comments related to. Street trees and the double loaded garages and the two car driveway that would be in front of each unit. Um, we recommend that those be narrow to one car. Driveway entrances for the garage in order to make more room landscaping, street tree. Et cetera. We reference the. Building better townhouse community model or, or guide of that the company has. I think the rest of our comments were addressed earlier regarding the. Recreation area, our concern about how that would be used. Um, we're figuring out how that would be used, we're going to touch upon the best for that space. And we suggest that possibly the, to the, um. Emergency access may be used as that tree and stuff. Been thinking further about how, um, the people who live in that development in the future could maybe rather spell with. And. Our biggest concern with this townhouse design, I'm thinking a little bit more about that and I understand that would be worked out more as the, the land itself.
For, for sure. Thank you for, for comparing the letter and representation. Um, I will say, you know, again, D P will be involved. Um, and, and regarding the, uh, driveway widths, um, these are two car garages. So I don't, I don't know if they're not clearly to reduce. We'll try to reduce where we can. Um, I will also say if you're. One of your comments was regarding the street trees next to the driveway, so try to shade in this areas. Uh, one of the things that we're going to be looking at as we kind of refine this plan. Uh, particularly the four foot offset in our actual, um, we may end up actually reducing. The, uh, roadway width slightly, um, which will certainly help with, you know, kind of a lot of things in your letter there.
Yeah, we just, that's the opposite. What you're proposing is why are the ones required at the township?
Correct. Correct. Uh, so that's, again, this is a sketch plan, uh, even the landscaping you see on here is, is not quite engineered. Um, frankly, it's, it's to provide a visual demonstration of buffer we intend to provide, uh, as well as some shading, not exciting. Uh, certainly replacing any trees that we are going to, uh, be removing as part of this property.
Thanks, Claire. Um, okay, with that, I'll walk up to the, to the public. Um, if I can just ask you to, uh, just please be courteous, don't talk over any other person. Um, so somebody wants to just listen. Oh, we need your name and address too. So if you just want to raise your hand, give us your name and address. Right here.
It's keep on, I'm at five oh nine Harleyville Pike. Corner of my property borders Meeting House Road. Um, couple of things. A lot of the communities. Doesn't like draft a chain, especially in the style of housing that we build, which we propose. Um. So my question one to the builder is, I understand by all rights and duty, we can build to an R four spec. We know that we can't stop someone from building land, doesn't develop, we can appreciate that. Why not build it to a R two spec and not cram so many homes in one and two, give more offsets? Right inside of the drive. To me, it's kind of like extorting the land. It's like, okay, how much can we jam in here? And make as much money as we can. That's how I see it. Um, to me, that eight acres, we got what? Two and quarter acres of nothing but open space and, and water withdrawal. So technically you're jamming thirty six houses on six acre. They're posted stand blocks. They're, it's not. Give the houses some more space. Cheswick is actually built to a decent spec. I believe Cheswick is actually more for also. Um, that they have a little more open space than what you're proposing here. Um, the second thing is, do you guys have an elevation drawing of what these things would look like? Because you have, you know, an overview and basically have a plank. With no elevation to show us like, hey, we pull into this development, this is what you're gonna see. You've got to understand all these people that border. That property are gonna be looking at the backside of these places every day. Um.
I want to say real quick on that one, not currently, um, we don't still part of. Uh, we've delivered your architectural for, for the home. Uh, make sure that we abide by some of the Oregon standards, but, uh, it's something that will. You know, go into the problem that could establish that plan.
Okay, now when it comes to the traffic issue. You're gonna line that road up with Meeting House for Penn Dot to fire. Um. Now you say in the future, there's a possibility you may need a center left turn. But you don't know that as of yet.
We're not actually saying that. That's believing it's a potential proposed issue. So we're not actually saying.
I've lived here for three years. A lot of these people in the community have lived here for twelve. In the past six months, I've seen five accidents right where people make the left in the Ched. And I live at that white house right there. All the time I hear bangs, the first thing I'm doing is the outdoor to see if everybody's okay. You had a second intersection along with that forty five mile hour stretch. Now you're gonna increase the risk of accidents. You have two points at which people are gonna slam on their brakes and make their right into their development. So at some point in time, when you realize it or not, you're gonna need some kind of traffic control device, whether it be a center lane, a traffic light. Drop the ski women on the road that may even help you with your line of sight. Is in my personal opinion, thirty five should continue all the way down six. And then go back up to forty five because that's in a stretch where a change is from thirty five to forty five. All those homes have like an eighteen inch shoulder. There's nothing there. I believe Penn Dot should be dropping that speed limit and make help you guys in one way or another. Um, and Penn Dot will certainly be reviewing some plan, some testing, various studies. And, and all the things we can take in. Um, now one question for the board. In nineteen seventy seven, the zoning was changed in a mad group under, um, a comprehensive plan. So they took giant swaths of township accounting and said, okay, we're gonna. Make this plan and we're gonna decide where it's gonna go in the future. And we, they took all these lots and they made them R four. R three, they changed some commercial stuff. I read through pretty much everything in that amendment. Um. How is it possible that you can take a projection from forty six years ago and. Understand that it's still gonna stick in the times we have today based off of. How people travel congestion of the area. I mean, to me, R four is a lot that road. We have issues now getting down Main Street, going to the northeast extension. They just redid some of that. And the more that we continue to develop around here, worse that's gonna get. And the community isn't gonna want to deal with all this crazy traffic. We all moved here for a reason and because we love it the way it is. We like. The old farmhouse that's on property and I understand we can't save it all. And it counts past the advance. But at what point in time do you step back and look and say, okay, we got these developments going. We got a lot of pushback from the community. Maybe we made a mistake forty six years ago and, 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 and adjusting that to R four. I mean, certain areas where you're, you're connected to bigger roadways and quicker travel times to. You know, highways is one thing, but when you take something like that, all that traffic is gonna be going back around down Old Gab and you're gonna be heading down towards the terminal. Now take into account that Harley Fuel Mutual Insurance Company. Sold that building and Velocity Venture Department bought it, and now they're trying to put Harley Flex Industrial in there. If they do, now you're gonna have a whole nother office building of people. Commute and back up, which is gonna then increase the load on all the industry. That increased our taxes. Because we're gonna have to all pay and maintain roadways. Any kind of facilities and maintenance that you need to do. I just get the feeling that that zoning change that was made in seventy seven was made in good, good hearted. They can't, we'll see, it's gonna happen. You know, most of those comprehensive plans that are built, they were built for five to twenty years. Now you got ones forty six years out, you got developers, they're saying, we have the right to build all that which back. Nobody knows what that is until a plan shows up. Nobody knew about the plan if it wasn't for Betty because. Council doesn't notify anybody in the surrounding areas that, hey, we got a builder coming in. If you have any questions, they're gonna submit a proposal. And I'm talking about maybe like a half mile vicinity around this building. You know, is it, is it a possibility that you guys can admit, say, hey, you know, forty six years ago, we made this. Adjustment to this amendment, and now we see this creating a huge rift in the community, you know, localized community. Did we make a mistake?
Well, let, let me, um, address a couple of those points. First of all, the, the fact that zoning has been off the. For quite some time, there's been no request to change. This property has been zoned R four for a considerable amount of time. Now that they have actually. Started the process with the township, the township cannot just simply change the zoning to R one. We would be sued and we should go. Um, so the property is R four and will be developed under the R four standard. With regard to the comprehensive plan that you're referring to. That is a very old outdated document. This township is not part of the regional. Planning area, and so you have to look at our Indian Valley Regional. Comprehensive plan, which is currently in the process of being updated. Current plan was, I believe it's, Manus, do you recall when it was? It might, might be two thousand.
I, I, I don't want to speculate, John, but I think it was probably about sixteen years ago.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's not extremely old. It should be updated within ten years, but still.
Well, it's good, it's good for a ten year period and then we start the cycle over again. So that's why I'm, I'm saying it's probably more than ten.
So what that does is that binds us together with other municipal outlets. With Franconia. Sarderton, Palpury, Southford, everything. Uh, and so we all share the same, uh, planning goals. And the land use plans are laid out to include all those townships. The zoning is, uh, up to each individual township. It is evaluated regularly. As I said, there's no. Has been no reason to change it up, uh, to this point. People do have, have the ability to do something with their properties, just like they did when they developed Cheswick. And people in Cheswick and people in Meeting House, uh, Road. Bought those lots.
And I was building what eighty three, eighty three, three.
That I don't know. Uh, I will also point out, however, that this is just a sketch plan. There is a lot of work still to do. They, they have to produce a tremendous amount of information, detailed information for us. And so in that sense, I would encourage all of you to keep tabs on this at the township website. Uh, there is no requirement for the township to notify neighbors of a land development. Uh, if it were a hearing, that would be different. We're currently hearing or commission user, but not for a standard development topic. So the, the thing to do is to, um. Check in regularly with the website and keep tabs on it there. Uh, and if I could, I, I think we've actually given you quite a bit of time. Uh, if we could maybe have some other people, any questions over here in the back. Name, name and add. Name it after.
So. Cause we are all about we. So we come out and need to run to Cheswick every day. Down that road, about a year ago, it took us five minutes. Now it's fifteen. From all that traffic that goes down here. The uh. The uh. Look, we again, everybody you can build on this, we get on. The problem is. There's a requirement that you guys are gonna be at major, but that. Who are feet mine that is already what? Five accidents, we. But there's. Every day, every day I. I'm praying that that's. So now. Traffic there at that meeting. During three days, like it's not really understand and that's DS, that's the only population. That makes this illegal. If they can move that that thing, again, you can build, but don't danger my ride. Every single drop. If it's six hundred feet required, that's not an arbitrary number, right? That's not just some, let's just take a. Any kind of analysis that says we need this much speed that people. And you guys are completely building a plan. Or legal because Pendott asking me to do that. So to endanger. You're gonna build. That. We hope we're not gonna be better. That's insane. It's a state, right? Move that exactly is when you're allowed to. You can't build the road there, but you need a waiver to do. It just it just doesn't make sense. We get a waiver to bring another. Because the rule wants me to put it here.
To your point, I just might suggest that. I mean, I I don't I don't disagree, but you mentioned it's a state road. Unfortunately, we don't have. The authority. To tell them where to put that because it's a state road.
And so that's six.
It's it's it depends on which will make that decision.
So Pendott.
I don't know how Pendott works. I mean, you heard our traffic engineer say, and you heard our chairman say. They both don't like it where it is.
What they're gonna do it.
But it's it's. Pendott issue, it's fortunately.
So through the through the process for permitting and access on a state road, it has to be designed. And submitted to Pendott for a full review. They have jurisdiction over where the access is located. Uh, when they. Review and ultimately approve any type of permit. Um, along a state road. So they do have jurisdiction over the township in this case when it comes to one thirteen being a principal arterial state road. Uh, we can, they certainly do um, look for our input and we can provide our reviews and our position on. On certain things relative to the access location. Uh, which we have done. Um, however, prior to this applicant. Um, coming in with this sketch plan. There was coordination and Pendott did make a decision. Based on what they saw and what they knew and and made a recommendation for the location. Um, they will have to go through a separate permitting approval process for the project. Coinciding with the land development process, uh, so there will be communication. Back and forth between Pendott and the township and the consultant reviewers. Uh, throughout that process.
Would there be traffic studies done?
There will be a traffic study done. It's requirement of the land development process.
Right here. Yes.
My name is Sergeant Quayle and I live in Cheswick. Four eight seven, and uh, when we were here last time, we did talk and I I pretty much remember several of. Especially the one on the video, the guy up there. They were saying that they kind of agreed with us to try to make it blend. With the neighborhood, with Cheswick to get away from these. You know, boxes, twin, 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 twins. And we talked about like, would you put twins in that, you know, wouldn't be these box flexes there? Sure, they're going to three stories. They're from three to two. But again, it still doesn't fit with the surrounding area at all. And I noticed, well, my husband noticed. Like suddenly, you know, you're you were commenting and how popular that is. Eight feet. Well, when you go down this side, there's forty feet from your backyard. And it's like right on top of our backyards. And, you know, we enjoy the privacy that we have. And I just feel like we've made these recommendations and yet. These builders just keep coming back and saying, let's give high density, let's give high density. And. I you can put in some beautiful twin homes or even single homes and still make. A very happy penny on them, and you can consider with the community how it fits. And as far as the road, I'm one of those people that was rearrended at Meeting House Road. With a truck coming at me, it's fifty five miles an hour. And my heart was told. And. It happens and I'm with him, I work, but when I'm home and I hear those accidents, I'm right out there on the side of the road with the curb. Trying to help people, give you my cell phone, and it happens often. And maybe Pendott needs to talk to the people that live around there to tell them what we see happening. Because they don't, they're not there to watch to participate and see it happening. And I guess. I would encourage the board to really encourage the builders to consider what the people. In Cheswick would like, and you know, you've got this playground, which is great, which is right next to one thirteen. And parents are gonna send their kids to this playground, and I guarantee you, I'm a teacher, parents don't supervise. Their kids very well who stays, and these kids are gonna run out into the streets. And there's just so much more to consider than just making money. You have people's lives. And I think that's really important to consider. And. It's just, yeah, I just think that you gotta think the whole process through, not just the small portion.
In the back.
My name is Eric. I live in Lederach. I got four year of one's route. With this coming in here. And you guys talked recently about the Lederach. Walking past and turning Lederach into walking community and all the part of where they're put on the corner of the Lederach that had. Municipal township date for Pendott's light that we put in. That bypass that they. Off the Chevy gear. That would end up probably being developed when they do a walking path just because. Couple hundred feet from here, basically abandoned in the Advent Church. A bypass, so you see all the path they have to wait for. And bring it straight and fast and go to few people that will be here in Cheswick. Is that being considered? When you're doing something like this? So you guys come and not where Met State, they should be across from Meeting House. Look, my that's that's intersection is waiting. That's where. Now you're talking about taking a bypass, what is it gonna be forty five mile an hour? Then it's gonna go down to thirty five mile an hour. And right in this direction. Like my move to Cheswick. Is why I'm gonna do this, because this gentleman is going to do that. Another time, it's all these guys are looking for maybe more easy house they can ask hours to accommodate. So this year, where's all this? I've watched this, I'm just one of them. I've watched, so you guys are having, this is Audubon, Lawrence, and Richardsonville Works. And just look up here to get away. And we'll have the development win off of Morris. And all that drainage going to fill that. Which is the end of. Now those basins are supposed to filter that water out. Want to drive down um, my house there, look at Phil Lederach, in Lederach. Look at the. It was slurry, man. Nothing can live there. Why? Because they put the drain off from developing it. And it goes into that, it runs right in the stream. It's in. But when the township is gonna draw a monkey and say, we need to look at what this gentleman said, I understand it. These people bought this property, they're building, making money. Not care about anybody in this. Or any of that. At what point do you guys? Listen and wait and look at. Living like a walking community, we're gonna be approved, all the apartments and and what. And an intersection. And now we're gonna take all the routine and whatever those clothes created with the force that is in here, we're gonna do the lettering on the routine. To make it. And throw in a bypass. Pass through all those bathrooms. And do not tell them they're gone for. At what point? You guys are gonna draw them, well, we're just gonna keep chasing much. And then the people who are going to have to move away and fall for the bad. That's the part that nobody seems to get. We've been to Meeting House. There's no. So some of the board members are out on just for the board itself, nothing though. But they don't even know what what uh, what we're. What the the people that live in here. The board member, he is that, what if I don't? Not nobody's in. Just the people who wanna make. Well, I I just have a question to you, I have a little point, will the. Or will it not be evaluated, any of this stuff? I know you just can't believe people bought this development. But where's all this rain off gonna go? Where's the snow gonna go then? Where's all this salt from there, it's gonna drain in. Where's it gonna go? Everyone across the street, everybody down the street will head down, and all of a sudden, it's immediately going to the office. Into the, you know, wherever you have all of them. I I'm just curious, when, at what point, I did that, does that bypass have to be developed? And that goes consideration with it. It's not even one of our services being talked about, so we're just gonna keep that over here. This done, then we'll worry about it. Need to make sure you guys have the Lederach community, both on the south side basin on it, and all of us through here about what's happening in Cheswick.
And I'm in Cheswick, four, seven, five, Wexford Circle. My backyard butts up to what you are proposing as the stormwater area. Thirty years ago, when my family moved here, the township had a map of this area. And Bullfrog Creek started there. Right in the middle of where, if you look at the stormwater area. Bring your arrow down a little, just a little, that's where it started. Thank you, Mike. It started there over thirty years ago and we moved there. For the primary purpose because it was told to us not only by the township in their draw. But by Dr. Durstine who lived there as well. That's a natural runoff area, they can never build there. And I realized, sir, you don't wanna build there. But you wanna make a stormwater area there, and I can tell you that you are going to take that path, that little blue line. And that's gonna pull water off of the other side of one thirteen. You're correct. But that whole area that those nine acres that you have, that just naturally flows by gravity. Down through the middle of the proposed road aid. Into the self, into the stormwater area. And it always has for thirty years. And your development will trucks, you're like even the back loader that you had out there the. This afternoon. Is digging around there looking for the water density in the ground. And about six months ago, they got stuck three times and had to get a big caterpillar to pull them out. Because the ground was so soft. It's soft there because it's a natural runoff. And nature has taken care of it naturally. Now, if you do a proposed water. My question is, who's gonna maintain that area to keep it from not looking scrubby? It looks scrubby right now, it could look better. Dr. Durstine did a good job. Who's going to know how deep it is? And is this gonna be? A danger for our children, some of whom drowned? I don't know. I'm asking questions. But my other concern is. That's always been a natural runoff. We've never hit mosquitoes. Because it naturally drains. If you're gonna build something there and say it's a proposed water, are you going to, like this gentleman from Lederach just indicated? Is it going to be a mosquito zone? Because the water goes nowhere? Because you already have the water draining off of one thirteen, but when it rains, it's going to puddle through there and it's gonna come down. Twenty years ago, when there was a um. And I apologize, I I don't know the hurricane was. But it was a huge hurricane that took out some of the um. Of flooded the natural water areas and took out some of the. The bridges that were in this area. That area there was flooded from. In the area from one side to the other. That was all flooded. Because of the rain, the hurricane. Now, yes. It was a hurricane that happened twenty years ago.
That was Floyd.
Thank you. That's right. It's right. Thank you. I forgot to ask my husband, he would have told me. So thank you, sir. It was Floyd. And it flooded the whole area and it stayed that way for some days until it couldn't actually run. And there is a creek over there. And it is called Bullfrog Creek, but nobody wants to put on a map here that it really starts there where that arrow is. I don't know if there's a natural spring there. But it starts there. It's called Bullfrog Creek, but it's the bullfrogs live there. How deep will it be? Who's gonna maintain it? How how much water is going to be there? Like, how's it gonna drain? Who's gonna control when it drains? You're gonna put a buffer there, but unfortunately, I'm gonna be looking on that stormwater. Mess. And and I, my backyard. People over here said they have worked on their backyards for years, so about. I love my backyard. I love the privacy of it. That's why we moved here. I don't wanna, I wanna be able to sit outside at night like I have been in the third years and not swap the steel all the time. Never had that. Thank you for listening to.
Thank you. John, there there were some specific sort of engineering questions. Can we get answers to those?
I I I think right now with regard to the stream, they have to submit a. Further information.
They absolutely do. I I I'm gonna ask the question, but I'm sure I know the answer is not yet. Have you designed the stormwater management? Area yet?
Not yet.
Okay, but it will be designed during uh, your preliminary plan submission, or not? Yeah, so I think it's too early. They just showed the general area that the stormwater management uh, basin will be in.
But but I think my point is. The questions that that she asked. Will have answers to.
They will. They will.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? We're two right here. You you and your neighbor.
I. It's these names change.
Name.
Question.
No, name, name it.
Forty six winter drive. I basically the same concern that I had for, first of all, you're going from what, thirty eight to thirty six? That's not a change. As far as I'm concerned. Um, parking, overflow parking, again. Are the streets wide enough for street parking? Now you're talking about narrowing that street because it's too wide. Where are guests gonna park for thirty eight family? If you have, yeah, uh, again, there's no parking. So. Four people have court the July party with fifteen or twenty people. You've got what? Five parking spots for them? Now I understand there's two car garages and they're gonna have their cars in the garage, but if they have company with six cars, family. Where do they go? Where where are they gonna park? And the other concern again is the the entrance in onto one thirteen. If you're coming from Giant Supermarket and turning left into Cheswick, there's gonna be. Five parts flying by, you want to right on the shoulder. While you sit to turn. Left into Cheswick. Luckily, I've never been hit. But I still watch my review there because they're going fifty, not forty five, they're going fifty or sixty miles an hour. Flying by on the shoulder. Illegal maybe, but. And then you're gonna have kids playing right there on one thirteen where people are flying by fifty miles an hour. It's. It's just insane. There's there. There's not enough room for thirty six. Family homes in there. And there's just, there's not enough, there's too much traffic ready.
Hi, I'm Judy Hewitt, four, four, six, winter drive. Uh, my question isn't really, uh, it seems like this is going to be built. Um, one way or another. My question really is about the historic. Farm and farmhouse. What's happening to them? Are you going to just destroy it and throw it away? Or is it going to be like reclaimed, be allowed to be reclaimed by people? And it's a two-part question, and the second part of the question is. In the spirit of Gemeinschaft um community, what the community was, is there any? Township. Um proposed ideas about. Setting up some sort of historic preservation township for these um. These farm homes that are are all about us. I know they're privately owned. But um I know certain counties like in Bucks County, they have that and they have certain. Rules there about paving lands, like there's only so much paving you can do in a development because of water issues. Because it will create water issues. You can't stop water. It's like, you can't do it. So anyway, the two-part question is, are, is there any kind of historic preservation in this township? I know Montgomery County probably has has it. But I mean, it's what, a hundred and fifty years old? They're gonna be torn down, number one, what's gonna happen to that? Barn and farmhouse, and number two, is there a plan to preserve some of these historic properties?
Not having. Is the mechanism to preserve historic structures. At this time. Uh in terms of what happens to it, that's actually up to the. Developer and or the landowner, they may, they may have had some agreement. Um beforehand. I don't know, that's that's a private matter.
What does the county have? For the store scene?
The county doesn't really have anything, does um store preservation, there's a store preservation on some state level. Um. We uh. We work with communities that they want to. Store coordination, but it's really up to the authorities. To to enact that and then at what level they would like to make those kinds of preservation changes, so. Um there are different. Different, you can address historic properties, but it is um.
Thirty ninety, four eighty three Cheswick Drive. I looked into, I saw Bucks County, I saw Montgomery County, I moved over Southford. All of the historical societies. They have saved a lot. In this whole area, however, that one is not one that they care about, where they can, because they can't afford to maintain. So it was born in eighteen eighty, it has a root cellar, it is so full of history, it's it's sick. Uh but I can't get anyone. To put a stamp on. And I don't understand. Why? Um. I know we have a lot of our. Indian Valley comprehensive plans, I know we have the the green. Land. Open space, I know we have all of that I had. Highlighted and read, every single one. And in every single one of them, they have something in there that indicates. Seen views, foreign land as world heritage, historical identity. Uh they they want to protect the existing villages in character. I have so many things. Historic structures and sites, scenic areas reviews. Uh they wanna, whenever possible, they wanna. Uh preserve the desirable natural and historic features of the site wherever possible. Uh trees eight inches or more in diameter at breast height, they have to at least. Analyzing to see they wanna. I have so many things that I have highlighted. Yes, I have the growth. Yes, I know you did a lot of different growth charts. I know you went up to two thousand twenty five, I know it hasn't been done since two thousand eleven to a gap of two thousand sixteen, I know it has to be revamped. But at this point, and yes, it is an old law that they did that comprehensive zoning. But when do we actually step in and say? Okay, we can promote revitalization, we can promote group. We can promote anyone that wants to make money, I I appreciate that. I know our township, our taxes won't go down, I've been told, because we need businesses to come in, or we can't get the businesses to come in until we get the people come in. But then we have Montgomery though. And I don't understand when that's gonna stop. And I don't understand. Why we have to destroy the farmhouse, I've seen so many ways that we can do the land grants, the land, the. Conservation groups, we have so many ways. That we could have gotten somebody to preserve that farmhouse. And I don't understand why anybody hasn't even at least acknowledged our concern.
To me, the two community center in that community.
I know that's how it is. And as far. And as far as the the soils are concerned, and I and I spoke. To someone on this as well. And and I can. Trust that you did have a scientist come out and do the. Evaluation of the land. Um on the US. Is it USGS site?
Yes.
Yes. Uh they have. Basically, that soil content as Bowman'sville soil. Bowman'sville soil, when I looked that up, indicated. You can't touch it. It's got no drainage, it has nothing. Potentially. Uh salvageable to be able to build one. Now, I've been told that a lot of aerial shots, a lot of other things were being done. Um to actually evaluate some of these land things, and I understand that that can be. Uh. You know, disturbed by either like development that's been on it or cement that's on it or whatever, so they have to come in and do an actual. Uh testing on it, and when your scientist did, lo and behold. It's now not a Bowman'sville soil, it's a uh Reddington and a rebuild. And the rebuild soil is not as great as the Reddington, Reddington at least can drink. Um. But there was nothing there that they could say. Was gonna be a problem. But that to me just generally bothers. No, we're not saying anything happened, I'm saying that really does bother me because I do know. That that place floods out. We are facing. The back of that property, and I take pictures. And I can bring my phone in and show you, I, every rainfall since Steel Horton was gonna be in here. I took pictures of every area where we had heavy rainfall, not even a rain or hurricane. And that was, it's out. And the fact that there is this one tree that. I'm sorry, must be about a hundred years old. And I look at it every day, I must have a hundred fifty pictures of it on my phone. Because it is the most gorgeous tree. Now, all this garbage is gonna be gone and nothing is gonna be. All those barns are historical, they're gonna. Um. I don't understand why we can't have something to be able to accommodate the historical and the natural wild habitat. To preserve, I don't understand. We have deer coming in, we have foxes. We have all sorts of animals, we have an eagle that goes in the pasture. We have a lot of different things, and I've been told, well, even if you have that, we transplant them, so. Well, we can't just transplant everything. We can't transplant that big tree. Can't transplant the historical farm, we can't transplant the Bullfrog Creek. I mean, you can't transplant it. And I. I don't, I don't get it. And I'm just very concerned. And if I have to look at something in my backyard that's going to. Take away beauty and the aesthetics, which is also another chapter in this. Comprehensive plan that says it's supposed to protect the aesthetic of the historical and the the village and everything that's beauty. Um. Why are we not going against, going worth it? You're gonna revamp the plan and take that away? Because you're not promoting it. Upper Southford, I know, has so many things preserved. Ted Oats, he, I believe, is naming. He's preserved so much more than we've ever. And yes, our numbers are big, but it doesn't count if the community isn't set. And you have open space, you have paths, you have tra- trails, you have recreational areas, it's wonderful. And not, but most of this stuff is promoting the growth to do, which is great. Except for people don't want recreational areas, they don't want. Little open space areas, they want a backyard, they want a view. They want the beauty of the country, so that's where they came. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, we'll take one more comment because we do have other business right here.
Yeah. Lori Young, Rashida, I live at four seventy Wexford, and uh I guess I'm gonna piggyback on all the comments regarding safety. And. With the PENDOT studies, can someone tell me, do they, are they open to public opinion? Or how can we find out more about those studies?
Do you think?
I mean, can can someone here tell me or follow up with with that, because. But the concern with the activists and adding in extending meeting house way. We're we're concerned about. So I'd like to ask if someone could follow up on that. And secondly.
There a second question? Didn't hear anything. Awesome.
And. So the public.
Could you, could you, could you just give it? Could you just give us your name? You're you're the traffic engineer for the applicant? Excuse me? Okay. Um, did you have a comment?
Just wanted to introduce her in case you didn't.
Okay, okay.
Shelby, what was the last name?
So.
Well, I think we have knowledge that may not be apparent at the time. And I think we'd like to share that.
Um. Yes, I guess what I would. Recommend, I mean, our, the the township interacts. With PENDOT primarily through our traffic engineer, with who's Stephanie. Uh Butler, who's.
Can she hear?
Yeah, she can.
If you talk, you have to talk louder, she said she couldn't hear the people in the back, but she could hear the people that are few rows.
My friend is right.
Yeah.
Stephanie, what the question is, is what what um ability is there for public input at the PENDOT review process? Where where would it be the most appropriate? For um. Residents to. Provide input.
That is a very good question. Um, public input with the PENDOT HOP. Highway occupancy permit review process. Um certainly, they can reach out, um we could, they could contact me and we could give them a a name. Um at the district traffic unit where they could provide comments. Uh but. You know, there's not a standard public meeting involvement when it comes to a private property development with access to a state highway. Unlike a public project, unlike a state or township. Public project where there is required public involvement. Um a private development project with access to a state highway does not have that same requirement. Um so we could certainly provide. Name and contact information for the district traffic unit, which they could certainly provide input to. Uh but whether or not they take that into consideration, you know, that's gonna be dependent on. Um, you know. That dependent on them, they don't typically receive public comment on those types of things. It coming to the township is really the the opportunity for public comment on land development projects.
And if you say you you will provide us with that?
Yeah, yeah, she did, she, what what Stephanie was describing is uh. Uh PENDOT's broken up into different districts across the state, our district is District Six. So Stephanie, uh I I guess what I would encourage you to do, contact uh Mike Beukin. At the township. And Stephanie will provide Mike with the names of the people at District Six. Who would actually be involved in reviewing. Um this application. And I I don't think that it's a bad idea, maybe. And that's not typically used to this in the process, but uh maybe if enough residents from around there start sending emails, uh. Maybe they they will welcome the influence. I would, I would encourage you to go ahead and do that.
And it could be. Part of the township, you know, getting some facts. Such as the number of accidents that have occurred.
I I believe it's, I believe with the traffic studies, they do have to analyze crashing, that that's pretty much standard procedure. So they would not only be examining the crashes, but they'd be examining. What the.
The service.
The inju- right, the injuries, certain, now those are only crashes that are reported to the police. So if somebody rams into somebody else and they take off. That's, you know, that's that.
Regarding stormwater runoff. Um do the studies look at the impact on the Cheswick development? If I look at all the excavation. In this area. Uh are there basins for the houses?
There there are basins for the entire from. Basins, oh. We have not seen.
The excavating for the house or the retention, detention basin, roadway. Um and I've heard you using or asking building up roads. So my question is, would your stormwater runoff study include what the impact will be to the Cheswick?
Yeah, as as part of the township ordinance, uh that's certainly an announcement we'll have to do. Uh we also have to meet the state departments, the D and D. Uh and the local conservation commissioner as well. Uh so all three kind of collectively with the meeting, all different stormwater requirements. You mentioned burbing and that potentially a stormwater issue, that's the sort of part of my apprehension with that question, saying yes, blood of burn. All sort of analyzing. For an issue, one of the. You know, there's, there's always some sort of engineering way to handle that water. Uh it's sort of something.
My question to the planning commission, um I'd like to expand on your comment with redesigning the natural waterway. Did you say something like it's not always most beneficial? And what can explain more on how I would mean by that?
I remember that comment was that. And. To. The um. I I don't want to make any claims that I. Expert in this field. Um but that, but the realignment of the waterway would also require. Building a new repairing corridor of that, of a buffer area for new plantings. Um in the same year that. Like replacing trees as to know this required, but anyway. Um but you would be getting rid of a lot of mature ropes and and. Stanglers. Um and the natural creatures that are existing, so there is just, there would be a time that it would, that would require. Go in and to ensure and for that environment to rebuild itself. Not to. Time, um not that it can't happen, but there would. It would have. In environmental. In fact, a a mature place would have. One that's maintained and taken care of.
You have an idea that time zones typically were, do you provide engineering recommendations?
Um I do not have that. Um I would have to look into that further as I'm more expert. But. Look into that, if I wasn't there, I'm sure the applicant also is able to do that, that was just a recommendation on our point. Or on our end, um we didn't go into a lot of.
Yes, I mean, my comment from my property in Wexford Circle. There seems to be a high water table soil. Very rotten. At the instance that they consider that dead half, that is.
Last one, because we do have other issues.
During the last meeting. Seven twenty eight, twenty twenty two, yourself, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. McManus. And expressed concern with the number of units, the density, Mr. McManus said he'd rather see possibly single or twins in this development.
Correct.
Obviously, they came back and presented pretty much the same. Few changes, few tweaks here and there. Are you guys still? Of of the opinion back in September twenty twenty two? Or has that changed?
No, I don't, I don't think my opinion has changed, I'm, I'll admit it, speak from self, um but as long as. The developer is developing in accordance with the zoning. And if multiple dwelling types are permitted by the zoning. We can't really dictate what it is that they can do, unless that is specifically in the ordinance.
But is your opinion still the same, or you, have you altered your opinion? But is your opinion still the same? Have you, have you altered your opinions?
No, my, my opinion is still the same. I think, uh, number one, we need to very carefully go through the calculations. I'm still not a hundred percent. Convinced that the, the density bonus that the developer is claiming is actually uh valid. Um, also the open space needs to be checked, so it, a- as I said before, uh, this is a sketch plan. There's going to be a lot more work done on this and, and it has to be examined under a much greater microscope.
I'm just looking to, Mike, can you come make that just a tiny bit bigger? I'm just looking at the property behind somebody's townhouse, they're running down Windsor, running down Chedwick. In between the, the back of the property and the buffer. In some cases, there's no distance. There is no yard, these people. There's no yard in the front, there's no yard in front. These are just.
That, that will be one of the other things they need to show is they're required outdoor space. And that required outdoor space does have setbacks, so they will need to show that. Um, so it will have more detail than this, and if they can't conform with it, then uh, they either have to lose units or consider going to the zoning hearing board or some other strategy. Um, so I'd, I'd encourage all of you to uh come out to future meetings and the agenda is always on before the meeting, and so you'll be able to see whether this is on future. Uh, moving on. If you are going to talk, please go on to the uh best field to talk, because we do have other business to continue.
Evening, everybody. Forgot why I was here. Uh, some amendments that were proposed as part of the Euro district, which have been actually affected a few other districts, uh, it's basically twofold. Um, the first is, uh, banks and financials were not specifically allowed as part of the class three uses. They are a district. Um, so first part of the amendment is to specifically add them. And if you recall, there are very similar uses already allowed, they are a district, retail uses. Office uses, um. Uh pharmacies, uh restaurants, and those could have drive groups. Uh, but a bank was not allowed, so it's adding the bank. Uh, it's, it's clarifying the language throughout the ordinance, because banks are referred to in many different ways in the other districts. So it's making that consistent throughout the ordinance. And then the second part of the amendment is clarifying driveway restrictions, uh, particularly on corner lots. There is some conflict, um, and it's a little bit convoluted language today as the ordinance exists. Whereas certain sections require you to have a shared driveway on Main Street, if you have frontage on Main Street. Other sections of the ordinance allow no more than one access per street if you're a corner lot. There's a third section that says have to take access only from the street of lesser classification, uh, classification if you're a corner lot. So the ordinance is seeking to clarify that. And it's basically allowing for class three uses, so it's only for properties that meet that standard. To have the primary access on street of lesser classification. And a restricted access or a secondary access uh on the street of higher classification. Which would be Main Street in most cases. There is, uh, so what happened from last time we were here, here to tonight, is that the solicitor's office has prepared the ordinance, clarified some of the language, incorporated the comments. That the consultants had, I read through it, I think the language is cleaned up and it's clearer. Uh, but the summary of what it accomplishes is what we had just discussed, so. Do you have any questions? It'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have any uh objections to? No, no objections, great.
So, so this is in essence, um. Andy's version?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Manis, do you have any comments on this?
Nope, this is consistent with what we discussed in the past.
Yeah, yeah. Um, has a hearing Dave is scheduled?
No, it's not scheduled yet, so the planning commission may comment now and maybe even give a recommendation to move it forward. And then it would go to the county official and we'll review. It has, it already has this version, like this version.
At this version.
Yeah, so that's a, since it changed, we just said. And then go up to the board or authorization advertised and that's the typical route.
Dave, do you have any questions or concerns about this? No, I was surprised that they got it done this fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think we should move along so the county can review it. Before we do it, on- once we're done, we go to a question up there, just to make your work.
Uh, on, on this?
Yeah, just one, once we're done before we voted anything.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Excuse myself either, I think they did it. Yes, there. There any, there's some questions from the.
It's, it affects that problem, the amendment is.
I know it's but yes, and showed the present plan. This happened and permitted to have to acknowledge or let anybody know about it. The only way I heard about it was when you were asking for a change of of use or ordinance or whatever at the last meeting we were at. That's the only way I made aware that one ninety six Cory Road behind that house, that's the only house that's sitting there. And across from Wawa, that's already a disaster area in traffic. And I did not know what was happening, so I know now it's happening, obviously, and I know that it's been there. And I know that estimation has started and I know all this other stuff has happened, um. But there's still going on, but.
Well, there was a grading permit, just you only, only grading, no approval. The, there's quite a bit of process for that, particularly as it occurred yet. Uh, that's a conditional use, it's a special level of approval. So it will actually be a public hearing scheduled, has not been scheduled yet. That John Kennedy mentioned, I believe, that that is one of the types of wires, notification, the whole township, same within a certain distance, I think it's five hundred feet. So if you're in Chedwick, you may have not been included.
But I'm.
The video would have been.
They're very concerned, the residents, the residents, they spoke over there, very concerned and they're going on. Uh, we're being, that's something that happened in this area.
Not going out yet, this hearing hasn't even.
And they usually notify, is it usually by?
Registered mail or.
Yeah, you, it usually is, and it's, it's within a radius of the property, so. Anybody can come, it's not everybody will see the notice.
Just a footnote, all of the literature that I've read and highlighted and all that, um. One of the chapters indicated, uh, chapter five indicated unprotected resources, woodland creeks. And scenic roads, and they indicated that Cory Road was one of the most scenic roads in the township. Um, that day. This is just an example of So I just wanted to make a note of that, that there's too much going on. And somewhere along the line, somebody's got to have the whatever to say, you know, let's reevaluate it a little bit here. Um, but that goes in and all those people go. All that traffic comes coming and we're stuck on Main Street. Uh. As it is, Wawa is like a truck stop over there, it was a small community one, which I know you had nothing to do with. Out of that area and it just kind of left the town a little down, so, um. In a community aspect, now that we have congestion in the other wood, so I just wanted to make my, uh, you know, and I'll vote for that. I think it's a, a little follow up to the, to the follow up the lots of, um, on some of this, I, I heard earlier we need to go to the, the township website to keep up to date, but do the minutes from the previous meeting, they get approved a month later at the next meeting, are they available in draft form?
Right, they are not available currently.
Um.
They cannot, they cannot be posted until they're approved, so they are always going to be a month behind a week, right?
Right, so if we kept up with the website, it will be on.
That's with the minutes now, you can, the agendas are current, they, uh, they're on the tight. At least you know what will be discussed.
And both development down with.
Um, yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a page called the Eye on Development and it has everything that's proposed. Like the sketch plan, the four eighty eight, how to build on there and everything that has been approved. Everything that's going through the approval process, everything that's under construction, everything's on there. And then contact information, talk to me or anyone else about any, anything coming up or asking the question whether or not there isn't. You could do that as well.
And, and from my understanding too, I think we've implemented a messaging mechanism, right? Electronic messaging, you can, you can sign up now to get messages. Are these the kind of message they would get to, or what kind of, what kind of messages?
Communication, yes, we're communicating.
Okay, it's more communication, reminding you there's a meeting tonight.
But these meetings are also recorded and put on the website as well.
And they're on YouTube.
Um, what is the relationship between the county planning commission and the township?
There are planning consult, there's the township's planning consultant.
There are advisors, but do they, is there any governing aspect there?
No, the governing body doesn't change, it's still the board supervisors, but the board supervisors have the, the county, government kind of planning commission, the right planning, all the services, some municipalities have private planning services, and actually some municipalities have both.
Thank you. Um, in reference to the notification process you spoke of, everybody within five hundred feet. Why are they being notified into the zoning variance of these, that you're applying for?
Well, it depends on what is, what is being proposed, but basically, uh, anything that, that requires a hearing. So a zoning hearing, which would be in front of the zoning hearing board, in this particular case, it's a hearing to amend. The, the ordinance, it's a text amendment, uh, this text amendment does not necessarily allow anything that wasn't allowed before, all this particular one. It's going there clarifying some language about a drive. Uh, is what it's doing, um, if there were a conditional use, um, application that was proposed, you neighbors would also receive noted setback.
Now, is there something that us as a community can put together to submit to the township to say, hey, if they're gonna, if we have a builder that approaches and they decide they want to develop a piece of land, certain people within the surrounding radius are notified, because like I said before, I, I would have never known it any better. I work seven days a week, I got two kids, I, I'm not on the township. The only reason I found out is through Betty. Uh, but it would be nice, even if it's not us, other people that, hey, if a developer comes in, they're going to flop in thirty, forty, fifty homes, twenty homes, whatever. You notify the surrounding area by mail within reason. Um, because otherwise, these people just have to continually monthly track this on the website that they don't have time for. Is there a way we can put something forward that we can?
There's no requirement under the municipality planning code, that's something that we really don't have any, it's, it's not in our, we, we have to pick that up with the board, we have to decide whether expend the money, uh, and the resources, because it is something that, uh, would cost money and it also takes resources, so they would have to buy.
So we would have to, we would have to propose to them. When they need to decide.
We can reach out, we can reach out to, we'll reach out to you, I reach out to Betty. Just, you know, give me your contact information, but it's, it's it's excessively onerous for the township to, to notify by mail radius around every proposed land development, and even with four eighty, it's not even but land development, I'm sorry, it's not a, an official submission, it's a sketch plan submission, which is not even required. They're just doing it out of courtesy, so to, to do the notification every single time. We would be constantly doing that in this township, but if you give me your contact information, we can certainly reach out to you every time there's activity here on.
Are getting a little bit on topic though, if you don't mind, uh, we can continue this afterwards, but we do, we, we are in the middle of a payment on the agenda. Um. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we report supervisor's adoption at the.
Okay.
We make a motion in a second. All those in favor?
I, I.
I'm opposed.
I.
I. Okay. Uh. So that's concluded, uh, any, anything else, Rick, or?
Nothing else for me.
And now I'll let you go on, I, I didn't mean to cut all the off system, you started to drift off a little bit into a tangent there.
Yeah, but from the township standpoint, it may seem like it inconvenience to board members, because, oh, well, it's just one project, plus we deal with under project here. And that affects you for a period. Us as the community, whatever change comes to our local area affects us for as long as we live there, that could be in our lives.
But, but John, I was going to say, one, one concern is, and I get here coming from is, because I sit on that side, just three meetings, sitting over there versus here. And the hard thing is, which we don't even get insight to, we have no idea when a developer buys a big farm. We have no idea until they come to us and say, now I'm going to submit some preliminary plans. So we're blindsided to it too, so you don't, we don't know, even this property we're talking about today next to Cheswick. We have no idea that, you know, so and so developer bought it, or what even plan on doing with it, something behind it.
Well, you know, as far as I do, that builder, old, he's in a minimum of fifty grand. So he wouldn't be putting his egg in a basket, if he didn't think he could throw enough money at it to get it through.
Just to clarify, bowler is just. It's not the owner for the developer.
Um, but yeah, I mean, these guys are already in fifty, sixty grand, they're going to pay well over a million for the property. We're going to list them houses, you know, four hundred plus, thirty six. He knows he's making an investment to prove the matter, he's got to pay for whittling, elimination, or whatever he's got to pay for. He's going to throw as much money at you through. So obviously, these guys step into payable, they were already ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars in. They see the potential, they just got to figure out how much. So yeah, you may be blindsided, and I completely understand it, because you know nothing until they submit.
Right.
Well, when that submission comes through, you're a minimum of what, thirty, sixty, eighty dollars?
Yes, well.
Yeah, why we're trying to keep eye on development updated.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's just frustrating for community members, because it, it, like, we don't know any of this until they flop up the building permit out front. Or we see equipment going in, and then everybody goes, well, what's happening?
Right.
And then nobody knows nothing, it's, you know, an angel mile contract. You know, and it's something that they have to deal with. I think it's something that should be put forward, doesn't change. You know, at least talked about in some form, it's got, if it's feasible, if it's possible. You know, at least talked about in some form, it's got, if it's feasible, if it's possible, and how you can do it.
You, you know, one of the, one of the things I would suggest is look at the zoning map. Because, and I, a lot of you have done your homework here, I can tell by the questions and what you've read. But that's the key component, because then when you see that farm and you know it's zoned for, you know, a high density, whatever. Then you can keep your eye on it because you know, probably developers eyeballing it, right? You know, sometimes somebody's gonna buy that farm if it's zoned as high, uh, uh, you know, you gotta look at that zoning still.
Yeah.
Because once again, you know, John said it earlier, this guy bought this land. He knew what it was zoned, he knew what he can build there, and he's, he's doing his math calculations and he figures he can make a profit here. And what John said is right, you just can't all of a sudden change the zoning line and force him to do things now.
I understand that by law.
Right.
But in nineteen seventy seven, the township went in and did it on their own.
Well, we, we look at, but that, that zoning map is looked at more frequently, but nineteen seventy seven.
I think it's been forty six years, so forty six years ago, and I have the inside, okay, we're gonna we're gonna grow in this direction, we're gonna, we're gonna change all this zoning at one stop, they're gonna rezone it however much. Now, forty six years later, we have people that say, hey, this is gonna be a real problem, there's a lot of traffic issues, water control issue. The zoning is what's creating this problem because someone in the beginning, they just say these guys aren't even close looking at how much wetland is there, I mean, because I was at the last meeting, I brought it up, and the next thing you know, two weeks later, we did a track over. And Betty said, what are they doing? I said, it's no work. They're going back to digging pits to see how fast the fills up, how fast the drains, if the drains.
But that's a really poor person, maybe Mike. They did it, I wouldn't bet, they came out, it's been two days without a meeting, starting digging out, previous, and then they pulled out another. We know why. But then it was within weeks of the meeting, nobody, nobody.
The problem is that they're not public knowledge, because they, after it's a priority sale. You know, so it, it, it would be interesting to be. They did it today and then.
Hey, John, I'm not an expert on the, the regional conference, but it's, my understanding, correct or wrong, that generally speaking, there are growth areas and there are non-growth areas, most of ours, Alfred, is a non-growth area. It's just, it's just the sort of downtown and surrounding is designated as the growth area. But once you get outside of downtown, that's pretty strict with zoning and other things that there's just not gonna be growth, is that generally correct?
This, uh, this track is difficult there.
No, I understand that, but I'm just thinking, generally, am I correct in that once you get sort of out of this, the downtown area, which that's kind of near, but that's, it's, it's pretty much no growth outside of sort of a, a circle of downtown Harleysville and surrounding areas.
And it's gonna be based on availability of sewer and or sap. Yeah. About doing sewers, so I think identity.
Yeah.
Element there, it's the other thing that controls.
But, so for you guys, you see what happened, like, you see what you see this, just can't handle the traffic, five block, early, you guys see it, and three, five. As, as you guys say, what is the big, you know. Obviously, you know how we do, but all the powers that be, they're a bigger, a bigger, a bigger. And like you were saying, that circle of development, and you got my box circle. This bypass that was never, you know, whatever, and this new development of Lator. This is gonna put the wall, I think, in the here. It's probably, I'm getting these things, these things, you know. And I'm just, I have no idea, just people go in, it's like, I thought I should call and say, hey, there will be. And I'm like, they just got these meetings, I'll be like and then I couldn't, I couldn't find, I couldn't read it, and I'm looking for them.
That is, that is.
It just doesn't, you guys, is anybody, well, the farmers, the county boards, the zoning, does anybody really care?
Why we're sitting here.
It's why we're sitting.
Why we're sitting here, why we volunteered to do this.
And it's part of that comprehensive.
What is your ability, we know, we can come in and voice up the rules, what you guys have to cut down like the kind of the dog, and that covers it, you know, again, to pay out all that, you know, C P A studies, things are, what is it, you guys?
We, we are, we are strictly advisory, what we do is we review the application, we work through the application with our consultants, with our engineer, or company consultants, or traffic consultants, and then based on all of that, um, we make a recommendation to the board, but we don't have any actual power to, uh, change any of those things. We don't have the power to, to change zoning, for instance, that is strictly the.
I'm just. About, you know.
Just in, in general.
In general, we just basically had to come into that.
You, you still always have to be able to accommodate some growth, otherwise, as a township, you will get sued. So if you can't simply shut the doors completely, uh, what we've always tried to do is try to manage the development so that at least it's it's, uh, we, we can mitigate some of the impacts of it. And we can also, um, make some overall improvements to the township, such as open space, such as improving our open space, uh, such as things like trail connections, uh, bike, bike trails, so that, that's really what we have tried to do. You simply can't just stop somebody from developing the property because you live next to it or you don't like what they're building. Uh, as long as they follow the rules, there's actually not a whole lot that we can do.
But that, I guess, so basically, if they did, if it was proved that they can't, like that, it's just, there's nothing, there's no permeable. There is more things, more land in Turkey is being developed than that really developed there, that what's going to actually be, it's like what you were saying, you have some talent to say, okay, well, there's not enough per, like, area for runoff. But that's, who's in training? You know, which, this stuff is being, they built it, they did it, um, but is anybody going back and waiting at this, all this stuff is leaking through here, running into the crease. Does any of this, or?
Well, one of the problems, and I'm, I'm sure probably all of you feel this way, um, is that stormwater regulations have changed tremendously, not just over, over twenty five years, uh, even over the last fifteen and ten years, they have continually gotten more and more stringent. So I would venture to guess there were probably very little in the way of stormwater controls when Chiswick was built. So that's a real problem. Uh, now, possibly in this process, we can actually help some of that. We do find that, um, fairly often that adjacent properties may have stormwater problems, but they're older properties, they really didn't have any real stormwater design to them. And so we, we do work with the applicants and try to get them to improve, uh, maybe even somewhat overdesign, uh, the stormwater system. Uh, but we can't really get into that until they submit a full application that has engineered plans and it, it has stormwater reports and all the other reports, such as the soil report that was related to. Then we can actually take all of that and our consultants can review all that, uh, material. And then we can, uh, start to make some recommendations perhaps to the applicant to change, and he may have to make some changes anyway, based on whatever the results of the test. So.
Hey, John.
So, go ahead, yes.
Hey, I, I would just offer a thought that I think we're reverting back to conversations about four eighty eight Harleysville Pike after we told most of the public we had moved on from that item, so I don't wanna alienate or frustrate people that wanted to be part of that conversation, so I would maybe recommend we might want to table most of this until the next meeting.
That, that would not be a bad idea, um, we, we, we've basically gone through our, our agenda, we just have the one, the one minor item. But I, I think that, uh, hopefully you at least have a little bit better understanding of what is a we do. I think some of the things that you're asking questions about or, or making suggestions about uh, are probably more appropriate for the board supervisors as opposed to, to us. Um, we really are, as I said, we're just advisory, we review against a set of recommendation of, uh, standards. We don't always necessarily make the standards, some of them, most of them, we've inherited, some of the ones we do change. Uh, but you still have to go by the zoning regulations of subdivision land development. So, and I, I think that's a good idea, uh, it is starting to get late, and this is probably a good conversation to pick up that, uh. Uh, we do have one item left on the agenda and that is the joint P C meeting dates for twenty twenty four. Oh.
Normally, we really talk about the sign ordinance in the V C district ordinance.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead, give us an update.
All right, just real quick, so I'm gonna be coming to you in January with the sign ordinance again, we've refined it, worked with, uh, the Slippers office of Andy, and, uh, we did. Um, and then the only other thing that I wanted to just mention is with the temporary signs were allowed a certain square footage, it was twenty twenty square, twenty four square feet. And that can be doubled on bigger lots. As an example, the Hemmings lot has twenty two establishments, they would be allowed sixteen small three square foot yard signs that you can see popping up all over the place. So not every establishment would be able to get a sign at a time, right? And, um, there would be some restrictions there, so, so everyone would be aware, they would have to work that out as a, I mean, establishment. Every, they would need to work out when each individual establishment would display a temporary sign, if they would display a temporary sign. But that would be like the most extreme area, so I'm not recommending that we do anything different, but just everybody aware that's how it would be enforced. So again, I'll come to you in January with that draft ordinance amended, looking for a range.
Okay. And then V C district amendments player or work player Mike?
Sure. We have been, we went with Andy to the solicitor to review the ordinance and they provided comments. Um, however, I kind of wanted to put that on pause, so we discussed last night, initially, we have to do some testing on two different properties for the ordinance, and so I brought a memo, I sent it in the last week, kind of outlining the process of ordinance testing. And it's an opportunity to look at the regulations that are proposed for the village district and to, to model and see how they'll work in a real life scenario. Um, it looks at dimensional standards, any design standards, and also use it for project testing, if we have free for, um, projects. So you sent, you sent two properties that I put in this memo here for everyone else to see what we're looking at and put in some basic information about each of them, and I wanted to get the rest of the county commissions thought on these properties, and these seem like they would be appropriate sites to do those kinds of testing. So what I, um, propose that we test out would be the dimensional standards, specifically looking at the front yard setbacks and looking at how the ultimate right of way from the legal right of way may differ, since we had had some back and forth about that. Looking at the frontage occupation percentage of fifty percent to see how that would work on a property in that area. And then also looking at density requirements for both residential, non-residential and, um, the other standard, like building length and, um, possibly with one of these properties, looking at how the preservation of an existing building would work with that density moment. So those are the kinds of things that we can look at in a scenario like this. Um, and of course, we'll also have to put in, um, other factors like parking mostly, um, that plays a role in how the site would be developed. Um, so the two sites that were suggested are pages three and four. Those on Main Street. One is the game and design property at not one near on the address, because I was getting different, um, I don't know which I'm making, to make sure I have the correct address, but three fifty five, three fifty five Main Street, um, at Moir, the main street basically, and then the other property would be the Burden property at Alderford and Main Street. Um, so I, I think that one in particular has the potential for looking at how the ordinance would work on this site, it was eight way spot in a way, um. So I wanted to get the county officials' feedback on those two sites, if these make sense, if there are other sites that might be good for anything else.
Okay, and I, I guess, um, the only other thing I'd add is I, I did discuss this with Mance a little bit. Uh, what we're really looking for was just a, a typical example of something that was um, underutilized, I mean, obviously, there's not really any vacant pieces of V C. So we're. Game properties are in zone V C. Burden property, the commercial, whether you would consider a change, at least give us an idea, could you do? So I, I think, and obviously it doesn't mean that these two properties are gonna be developed by any means. Uh, but I think we start to give us some, some more graphic examples, like you know, what these standards actually look like when placed on the site. So. Appropriate for.
Yeah.
Dave, you can. Manus, any other further comment?
No, I, I, I think it's a great exercise to go through, because, you know, you can read all the language you want, but until you actually see what it looks like, it might be specked out, it's hard to hard to get a full appreciation for what we've created, so I think it's a great exercise.
So in terms of the timeline, um, I I will have to look at our, um, our design team's schedule and, and work with them to see what, what they would be able to do if, um, what, what next meeting would be would work for their availability. So I guess Mike, I can talk with you, I'll talk about, about that.
Yes.
The next.
Sounds good. Finally, now we're onto the last, which is, uh, the joint meeting days for twenty twenty fours. Um, the main reason why we're talking about doing this now, and I'm gonna give you a picket before you turn, but, um, for those of us who don't monitor advertising costs, advertising costs for things like ordinance have gotten very expensive. And believe it or not, we can save about a thousand bucks by picking the dates now and lumping them in with all the other advertised dates. Um, which from my standpoint, I perfectly find doing that. Uh, so that would be a, um, a, a date in August for the combined July, August, and then a, a date in September for the, or in December of the combined November, December meeting. Um, as you did do a, a quick look at, or I guess Mike, quick look at what the past few years were. And the, the dates that seem to come into focus would be, uh, the second Wednesday in August and the second Wednesday in December.
It's fourteen.
I'm figuring so far ahead. Really doesn't matter.
So the, the intent is to, if, if we do set it and there ends up being a conflict of, of the majority, then we could always change it, we don't, we would rather not, but we could still change the day then joint meeting down the road. But.
Or you did next December.
Okay.
Yeah. Are you still good with, with, uh, this, Manus?
Yeah, and I, I just looked at it, in both cases, it gives us a six week gap between that and the following month, which I think is about appropriate, so, uh, second Wednesday makes a lot of sense.
And, yeah. All right, we don't need the documents.
No, I, I don't think.
We're just good.
So the second Wednesday in August and the second Wednesday in December.
Yep. Yep. With that.
Yeah, you're ready? Stuck at that.
Okay. Most in a second, all those in favor?
All right.
I'm opposed. All right, thank you for coming up.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas. Bye, everybody.
Yeah. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, everyone.